Okay, calling to order, City Council Regular Meeting, 6:35 Tuesday, April 7, 2020. Meeting Accessibility Pursuant to the Governor’s Emergency Proclamation, 20-25. The city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public and public comment is still able to be submitted. To view live, city website www.samamish.us/news/events/tv-21/21, city Facebook, www.facebook.com/cityofsamamish. Comcast Channel 21 with Vince Amamish only. To view later, meeting videos are available the day after the meeting. Comcast Channel 21 again with Vince Amamish only. So we’re going to call the meeting to order and roll call.
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Gamblin.
Present.
Councilmember Jason Ritchie.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine. All right, everyone is here. We also have some staff on the call, including interim City Manager Dave Rudan. We have Andrew Stevens, Jim Hominick, Cynthia Tawana, Kim Pratt, Mike Kenyon, David Linehan, and I think that is it.
Excellent. Okay, if everybody, and hopefully you do, have a flag, please join me in the pledge. Okay, next up is approval of the agenda. I need a motion for approval.
Arrived. Second.
Okay, we have a first from Deputy Mayor, and I believe the second was from Councilmember All in favor, say aye.
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 Any dissenting, say no. Okay, next up is emergency management. This is what I think everybody has come to normally hear from this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Andrew Stevens. I’m the Emergency Manager for the City of Samamish with Eastside Fire and Rescue. Two weeks ago, the global number of confirmed coronavirus cases was just over 400,000. Today, that number has risen by over 1 million. At least, at just under 390,000, the United States leads the world in positive cases, a number nearly three times larger than the next highest country. As of today, the total number of confirmed cases of COVID-19 cases in Washington is 3,462. However, recent studies have shown that the stay-home, stay-healthy order has begun to slow the spread of virus in this state. In looking at the metrics across King County, it appears Samamish residents have been doing their part in fighting this outbreak as well. Out of the 39 cities in King County, only three have fewer number of cases per capita. While this number may not be entirely accurate due to lack of testing or asymptomatic individuals, it is still a notable accomplishment. However, this outbreak is far from over. While we should all be encouraged by some of the statistics coming out of Washington State and King County, this fight will continue for many more months, and we may very well see multiple spikes in positives. This is not a virus that can be contained locally, as evident by the global numbers, but must be fought with a concentrated, unified effort. And while Washington has been limiting gatherings for over a month and issued a stay-at-home order more than two weeks ago, there are still nine states with no such mitigation measures in place. So I urge all Samamish residents not to be lulled into a false sense of complacency, as everyone still needs to remain vigilant in this effort. Now, understanding the massive economic, psychological, and emotional toll this response is having on our community, the city has been progressively leaning forward to assess and identify ways in which we are able to support the various nonprofit, human services, and faith-based organizations, which will all be essential to the long-term recovery of our community. The city has distributed a survey to all these community stakeholders to gather information on their current capabilities, what their needs are, and their ability to scale up services if a greater number of residents need them. Furthermore, the city’s Human Services Coordinator is in constant contact with these organizations and is providing weekly situational reports to the EOC and participating in semi-weekly meetings with colleagues from other Eastside cities. City of Samamish is also continually updating its Connect-Samamish COVID-19 Resource Hub with new information on programs established across the county which may support residents in need of assistance. On the economic front, the city is continuing to promote and share small business resources, such as low-interest loans available through the Small Business Administration, resources from the Washington Employment Security Department, and unemployment resources for impacted individuals. We are also looking at ways in which we can further support local businesses, such as collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce to aid businesses throughout the city. City government is continuing to function with only a slight reduction in organizational capability. Due to the early implementation of robust COVID-19 mitigations in social distancing and telework policies and ingenuity of city staff, we can proudly say that the city has been able to ensure the continuity of all mission-essential functions without a single instance of workplace contraction to COVID-19. Lastly, in times of stress and what may seem like an unending cycle of bad news, it is important to share stories of hope and resiliency. Samamish residents have continually stepped up in support of one another throughout this crisis, whether working on the front lines in a hospital, sewing, or 3D-printing masks and respirators, or picking up groceries for a vulnerable neighbor. The community is standing together. Therefore, I’m asking residents to share these stories of community resiliency on our connect.samamish.covid19 webpage. We do not want the hardships we are facing to be the ones that define this moment, but instead, how our community has come together to support each other when it was most needed. Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work. I know you’ve been working around the clock on this, and probably will be for a very long time. Okay, next we have our consent. See, I don’t see the whole chat box. It doesn’t say. Okay. Okay, we have a comment. So Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thanks for the update, Andrew. I was wondering if it’s possible for the council to be getting the report that Reed has been putting together.
Yes, we can absolutely forward that to you.
Thank you. That would be great.
Is there any other questions? Okay, moving on, we have got public comment. As I mentioned earlier, we do allow for public comment in different methods. Mike, did we have anybody calling in?
I do not see anybody in the go-to meeting right now. If, for some reason, I’m not seeing anybody, can you please speak up if you had called in to provide public comment?
Nope.
I don’t see anybody, then.
All right, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so next is the consent. Excuse me? I think it’s the echo. Okay, next is the consent calendar. A motion, I need a motion for the consent calendar.
Arrived. Second.
Okay, so I have a first from Deputy Mayor and a second from Councilmember Ritchie. Any, is that correct? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh, we have, we do have.
Aye.
Shoot. This is not going to work, though. And any opposed? Seven, no. We did have a question from Mr. Gamblin about any written comment, and Councilmember Gamblin, I’m sorry, this question stuff is not going to work very well.
Councilmember Gamblin, I think that we do get the written comments. We’ve received several today. Melanie, bring them with you.
I just wanted to make sure there’s no other ones that we’ve missed.
Okay, next up, we have got unfinished business. And that is the resolution establishing an administrative leave bank. I’m going to give that to our interim city manager.
Thank you, Mike, for your assistance there. Let me just go through the motion here. On March 20, because the wording of this is important. On March 24, 2020, the City Council passed a motion approving a draft resolution that was read by the city manager during the meeting and modified by the city attorney. The draft resolution provided a three-week bank of administrative leave for the city employees to help mitigate the impacts of COVID-19. The intent of this action was to ensure that there would be no unpaid gaps for employees should they need to use any state and federal paid leave programs, such as the Family Medical Leave Act, or should there be an emergency shutdown of the MOC or City Hall causing a short-term evacuation and interruption of work or productivity while the facilities were decontaminated or personnel had to be relocated due to that contamination. The draft resolution was not on the agenda for the 24th meeting, but was only brought forth by the interim city manager as an idea for future consideration. However, there was a strong support among the council, so it was approved that evening, call it in concept. Council requested the interim city manager follow up at the next meeting with a complete resolution language and the estimated financial impact. Following the meeting, staffed work with legal to develop a resolution, which was included here as Exhibit 1. This formalizes the draft that the council approved on March 24, 2020, and kept the following aspects of the previously approved draft resolution, oh, excuse me, the following key aspects of the previously approved draft resolution were changed in Exhibit 1. Exhibit 1 provides up to three weeks of admin leave following the approval of the city manager. The previously approved resolution provided three weeks administrative leave to all employees upfront. Exhibit 1 adds a requirement that the employees exhaust all of the applicable sick leave options as authorized by the state and federal government prior to using that administrative leave. Here, we tried to go through and sort out what those laws and mandates, primarily from the federal government, employed. Exhibit 1 adds another option for the use of admin leave, which is to supplement reduced salary when taking the public health emergency leave. The provisions of the presidential order get a bit more complex, and there are maximum limitations depending upon whether or not the employee is, contracts COVID-19, or whether the spouse does. And we looked at that as an option for the administrative leave to make up some of that difference for a limited period of time while the employee may be absent in the workplace due to a COVID illness. The Finance Department has estimated the financial impact of this policy, which can be found under the Financial Impact section below. The next section is the Financial Impact. Exempt employees. For exempt employees, the fiscal impact is neutral or $0. The impact would potentially be the delay in work being performed until later than originally scheduled as a result of the use of administrative leave. There is no payment upon termination for unused hours of this type leave, and there is no additional fiscal liability to the city that would accrue, like there is for a 25% sick leave payout or 100% payout of vacation upon separation. And that is because the administrative leave does not turn into a vacation leave. This leave is a use-it-or-lose-it, and the use would constitute a potential delay in the work being performed. Although exempt staff could also work more than 40 hours to make up for the delay resulting in the use of this leave, so there is no certain impact on the mere, on more or less dollars spent. For non-exempt employees, the same mitigating factor, a work delay, could occur since overtime is owed for any hours worked in excess of 40 hours per week. If non-exempt work is not done and an administrative leave benefit is paid to the city employee who for otherwise, who would have otherwise had to take unpaid leave as a result of COVID-19, the cost of the benefit would come from the city losing out on that opportunity to save from unpaid salaries. Below are some rough estimates of the amounts the city would pay if the benefit were used entirely, that would otherwise be unpaid if every non-exempt employee used the full weekly amount of administrative leave. And that is one week. Potentially, the estimated fiscal impact is about $165,292. Two weeks of potential impact could amount to a total of $330,584 if the full benefit were used. And for the three-week period, the potential impact is about $495,876. It is likely that only a small portion of employees would need to use this benefit, and not everyone who does would need the full three weeks. Therefore, these are likely very conservative estimates. That is estimated on the far, far high side. Note, these estimates all assume non-exempt positions are filled, and they exclude payroll-related taxes on payment, on benefit payments. Let me say that not all of our vacant positions are filled in the city, and we are frugally watching that because of the potential economic impact to the city from this economic disaster that’s coming from the pandemic. Further, our city has been extremely resilient, and the flexibility of our employees to adapt to remote working has been nothing less than phenomenal. We have an estimated 85% of our workforce working remotely, using a vast deployment of laptop computers, which is making us benefit from utilizing almost a full service capacity that we’ve always had. And some of those folks who have been working in the field and are falling to the criteria of being subjected to more problems from COVID-19 should they contract it, i.e., like employees who are otherwise medically vulnerable or over the age of 60, have been removed from the field and are working remotely with those laptop computers. So, not like, unlike many organizations in the county, the City of Samamish is producing high productivity from its existing workforce and taking full benefit. In fact, we’ve not had one exposure that has been yet reported to us by any employee for even being exposed to COVID-19, nor have we had any employees request the child care option that is afforded to them under the Federal Family Leave Act. And I think our flexibility and resilience of our staff, if they have had a child care issue because of schools being closed, has been able to adapt readily because they were already deployed doing teleworking from home. I stand ready to answer any other questions the council might have.
I would like to move that we adopt the resolution establishing an administrative leave bank for use by the city of Samamish employees during the COVID-19 emergency, as written.
I’ll second that.
Just to speak to my motion, Dave, thanks very much for updating this. Really appreciate the clarifications. I want to give, since we have the folks on the call, I want to give a call out to our IT folks. They’ve done so much in the last couple of years. We just keep testing them over and over again, so thank you very much for all the work you’ve done to get laptops out to everyone and for making sure that our networks are handling all of the additional traffic. If folks can stay muted until your turn to speak, can and can, you should mute until you’re ready to speak.
And, Mayor, if I might interrupt, I know we have a motion, a second. I didn’t forward through here. I think it would probably be appropriate that I read, for the record, the modified resolution, if you agree.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, and sorry, folks, for failing to do this. Resolution number R2020, and it will be given a name if passed, a resolution of the City of Samamish City Council establishing an administrative leave bank for use by the City of Samamish employees during COVID-19 emergency. Whereas, the governor issued a declaration of emergency on 2005, on February, excuse me, a declaration of emergency 20-05 on February 29, 2020, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, here and after referred to as the emergency. And, whereas, the emergency has had an increasing and alarming impact on city operations. And, whereas, the City of Samamish has a highly flexible and resilient workforce that has adapted itself to the ever-increasing challenges of this emergency. And, whereas, this resilient workforce may become more impacted than it can otherwise cope with, given the limited human resources available to accomplish its task due to ever-increasing work restrictions placed on it by the state and county officials. And, whereas, the emergency’s reach has the potential to devastate the otherwise healthy and productive workforce we know as the employees of the City of Samamish. And, whereas, the president has expanded the Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA, with Paid Health Emergency Leave, abbreviated PHEL, policy, which provides up to 12 weeks paid leave for employees not reporting to work during their emergency, and has established paid sick leave for those impacted by the emergency health crisis. And, whereas, the city desires to establish an administrative leave bank for each City of Samamish employee to ensure that application of state and federal paid leave programs do not result in unpaid gaps to payment to employees. And, whereas, at its March 24, 2020, regular City Council meeting, the City Council passed a motion approving a draft resolution read by the city manager during the meeting, as modified by the city attorney. The draft resolution read at the March 24, 2020, meeting was not in a form or numbered, and the resolution herein formalizes the draft for final execution by the mayor. And, whereas, the city finds that the paid administrative leave program herein is necessary to fulfill a legitimate public purpose, to ensure ongoing municipal operations, and therefore, the paid administrative leave policy herein, herein does not violate Washington State Constitution Section 8’s prohibition on the gift of public funds. And, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Samamish, as follows: Section 1. City manager directed to establish paid administrative leave. The City Council hereby directs the city manager to grant up to 120 hours of administrative leave, here and after leave, to each full-time employee in equivalent ratio to each part-time employee, and to place these hours into a pooled leave bank, herein, here and after referred to as a leave bank. The use of the leave bank shall be approved by the city manager based on the criteria outlined in Section 2. Use of the terms paid leave, leave, leave bank, herein, here, are, herein, are distinguished from and shall not be considered paid administrative leave as this term is used in Section 8.6 of the City of Samamish’s Employee Handbook. Section 2. Use of leave bank. An employee must exhaust applicable leave, sick leave options authorized by the state or federal government prior to using the leave bank. The leave bank may be used by the employees who are unable to work due to office closures, lack of childcare, illness of the employee or another for whom the employee provides care, quarantine of the employee or another for whom the employee provides care, and for the city’s reduction in work to be performed. The foregoing list is intended for illustration, not limitation. In addition, employees working a modified, that is, reduced schedule, shall have access to the leave bank to supplement any unassigned work hours. Employees taking leave under the Public Health Emergency Leave, that is, in perenns, the expansion of the Family Medical Leave Act in perenns. An emergency paid sick leave may use the leave bank as a supplement to ensure that they are receiving full salary. Employees’ pre-approved hours worked from home will be considered work time, and such hours will not be deducted from the leave bank. Any unused leave remaining in the leave bank upon termination of the emergency, as determined by the city manager, will be accounted for and reported back to the City Council. The City Council may eliminate or reapply the balance as it deems appropriate. No cash value. City Council approved, approval required for changes to policy. Neither the leave bank nor the leave therein shall have no cash value and will not be cashed out upon termination or resignation of any employee. The amount of administrative leave granted may be increased with approval of the City Council if the emergency is extended or otherwise circumstances apply. The city manager may adopt additional regulations to implement the leave, leave bank, and post-emergency leave bank policy. Section 4. No changes to the employee handbook. The leave bank is intended to be effective only during, for the duration of the emergency, and therefore, the provisions of this resolution will not be included in the employee handbook. And it ends as an adoption by the City Council at a regular meeting thereof on day of blank City of Samamish, and it will be signed by the mayor if passed and attested to or authenticated by the city clerk, and approved as to form by Michael Kenyon, city attorney, if it moves ahead. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we had a first by Pam and a second by Jason. Pam then gave us, Pam spoke to the motion on the floor, so going with comments, people So going with comments, people who have written to me that want to speak with comments, I have got first up of Councilmember Trean, followed by Councilmember Ross and Gamblin. Councilmember Trean?
All right. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'd like to make a friendly amendment to make three changes. And the first would be changing 100, in Section 1, changing the hours to 80 hours. The second would be in Section 2, to strike from Section 2, the sentence that says, "The foregoing list is intended for illustration, not limitation." Just remove that. And then the third amendment to this friendly amendment would be to, in Section 4, state that the leave bank is intended to be effective for the duration of 90 days, and therefore the provision of this resolution will not be included in the handbook. Can I get a second on that?
I second that.
Well, first, we have to handle the first motion that's on the floor. So we have to, before we can do anything with your motion, we actually have to vote on the first motion on the floor.
Actually, we would do the amendment. That's right, we would do the amendment first.
So right now, we're in discussion on the motion on the floor.
No, but you have an amendment, so we have to vote on the amendment. So now we're discussing the amendment.
Correct. There's a motion, there's a motion to be amended.
Mike, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
There he is.
Do you?
Do we handle the amendment on the floor, or do we handle the first motion?
We handle the amendment because technically the motion to amend has tried to second the, starting with the amendment.
Excuse me, Mike. Mike, we need you to speak up. You're really muffled. Thank you.
All right, let me try that. Is that better?
Much better.
Okay. So yes, there is an amendment on the floor. The amendment has been seconded, and so first take up the amendment. Technically, the amendment includes all three of the items that Councilmember Trean put on the floor. So the 80 hours in Section 1, striking the sentence in Section 2, and changing the duration of the emergency to 90 days in Section 4.
Okay, we don't have a second on that. So if there was a second, we need to know who that was.
It's Gamblin.
It looks like then Gamblin.
Okay. Okay, so the motion on the, so the, do you have that? Okay. Okay, so we have, now we are going with the, with the changes that are on the floor, which is the three changes that were proposed by Councilmember Trean, seconded by Councilmember Gamblin, if I have that correct.
Correct.
Okay, so now we need to have discussion on that. And I have got queued up here. I have got Deputy Mayor, followed by Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trean, can you repeat what your, the third section was? I've got the first two written down, but I couldn't write on your, the third section. Can you repeat it, please?
It was to make it 90 days.
Which section? Is it Section 3?
Section 4. The leave bank is intended, that's Section 4. The leave bank is intended to be effective only for 90 days, and therefore the provision of this resolution will not be included.
Wonderful, thank you.
So were you done, Kristi?
Kristi, did you have any other questions?
No, I'm done. I just needed it repeated. I just, I mute myself when I'm not talking, so sorry, it took me a second to get back.
No worries. So I'm strongly opposed to reducing it to 80 hours. This will only be administered at the city manager's discretion anyway. Limiting that, I don't think makes any sense. If someone is in crisis and has an emergency, we need to take care of that. I like the wording, actually, that says that these are illustrative examples and not limiting because this is a healthcare crisis. There could be some other situation coming from this crisis that we haven't thought of, and we should not limit that. And I think for Section 4, it actually is contrary. We want it to be in effect during the emergency, which miraculously, not likely, could be less than 90 days, but there is a strong chance that this could go longer than 90 days in terms of the needs. I think the mayor raised the issue last time that even as the limitations on employees and things begin to subside, there could be ramifications that could continue. So I strongly oppose these amendments. I think this is very well worded, and we need to make sure that we are, in fact, taking care of people who may fall into some form of crisis.
Okay, I've got Councilmember Ritchie.
I should take my mute off, sorry about that. Hey, so thank you for that. I guess my only question relative to the amendment is to the city manager. Dave, can you provide your perspective on whether or not this gives you the, if these amendments are helpful, beneficial, restrictive, what do you, what's your opinion on?
As to Section 1. Granted, up to 120. So the maker of the amendment is looking at a two-week period, is, if I'm correct. I'll go through each of these.
That's correct.
Okay. And then, depending upon the council's wishes, they're two or three weeks. I'm indifferent about because I can come back to the council and expand it, because I had originally made a motion of two to three weeks. The provision in Section 2, which is to strike the section of illustrative example, I'm just trying to read it to find that. Oh, is it, I think it was, the foregoing list is intended for illustration, not limitation. I guess maybe I need to understand what the concern might be there because the city manager is granted latitude to amend the implementation of this as necessary. I think that just kind of gives the city manager a little bit of latitude in doing that. We just didn't know what we were going to go through, so I guess I would want to hear more debate before really rendering an opinion. Right now, I'd say that it does give me some latitude. The provision in 4, no changes to the handbook. Oh, it's there for the provisions during, let's see, the leave bank is intended to be effective for 90 days versus only for the duration of the emergency. I've got a thought on amending the amendment, but I'm going to let you folks debate that. I don't think, because of the flexibility that I have under the emergency, it's neither here nor there. I think it's an important section to say that this is no changes to the employee handbook, so you're not caught into a labor dispute later down the road that there was an intention to have these provisions become part of the handbook. It is not the intention to do that, but to have it be for the COVID emergency. Is that satisfactory for an invasive answer?
No, and I, Dave, it's still Jason. I mean, I'm not, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I guess I'm trying to figure out here is whether it's two or three weeks. I mean, I guess that, my goal here, from, just from my position, is to try to give you the tools that you need to be able to take care of staff. And I'm not entirely sure the logic in nibbling around the edges, but I respect that that's, you know, people have different points of view. I guess I'm trying to figure out whether or not these are, the amendments as presented would be, I'm not trying to be argumentative, are they, let's just, you know, whether we approve them or not, are you going to be able to get what you need, whether it's two weeks or three weeks, you know, whether this section is the lead or not, or whether it's in the handbook or not? I mean, I guess the handbook one's pretty straightforward, but I guess, you know, do you have what you need from a city manager perspective, whether we approve the amendments or not? Are they, are they your core to the goal of this motion?
Okay, then, Section 1, I can live with and make the 80 hours work. From an optics standpoint, you have a less fiscal impact potentially unless we're going to get close to exceeding this, and then I'll come back to the council if I'm your city manager at that time. So I'm okay with the amendment on that. It gives me plenty of latitude because of the state of emergency to do what is necessary. But as I think you can see with my efforts, I try to be forthright and transparent and try to come to the council or give as much notice as possible. To strike the issue in Number 2, the, I could make that work because in the end, under Section 3, the last sentence, the city manager may adopt additional regulations to implement leave leave bank and post-emergency leave bank policy. That's one that I think you should probably hear from the legal staff because they are the ones who proposed that be in there. And then on the other provisions, if it's only for 90 days, or did the maker of the amendment meet, and I misread into it, that you want us to come back every 90 days for a renewal of the amendment, because that's what it would require.
Yeah, I'm confused on that, too. Okay, thank you.
I would agree, every 90 days on a renewal. I'd like it to come back to us in three months, because Section 3 gives you everything you need, Dave, to move forward. And the change on Section 2 was to limit. It really is, so there's the honest truth.
Could you, could you repeat that, Councilman Trean? On 2, you said something, but I didn't catch it all.
Yeah, so on the Section 2, either, it's either too wordy, or actually, I, what I'm proposing really in my amendment is that it is limited to the things listed in there, with the understanding that when you read Section, this is why it's not necessary to even be in it, is so, because Section 3 gives you the power that you need to make the decisions based on the needs that will come up in an emergency situation. That's what lays out in Section 3. And then I know that there are several people who've talked to me about employment because I run a program, and so one of the things is putting a time limit on it for Section 4. Maybe the amendments agreed then, effective only for 90 days, and then to be reviewed by city council or renewed by city council if needed.
May I speak to it, Mayor? Thank you. This is Dave again. Then regarding that, that will give me the tools to read, I mean, to use, to move forward. And I would just recommend that we just hear from legal counsel as to that statement on the limitation and illustration, because that was added by legal counsel. So I can't render an opinion on that, but 3 gives me a lot of latitude, and coming back every 90 days to the council is, I'm fine with that. That's prudent policy, and I would be reporting back every month, at least, on what's going on to the council. But the council will then reapprove every three months or every 90 days. I can make that work, too. So I understand what it is I think you're trying to accomplish, and to Councilman Ritchie's comment is, if I can live with that, I could.
Councilmember Ritchie, have you had your questions answered?
More than enough. Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, city manager.
Okay, next, I have got Councilmember Ross, followed by Councilmember Gamblin, then Councilmember Stewart.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. It's kind of hard when you bundle three motions in one package, and so I, I'll start with the third part. The third part, I think, is practical from a standpoint that we have a term certain that's renewable, that allows us to report on the current status of the pandemic and have facts and data determined, rather than leaving on one person's judgment on when this emergency ends, but we can be reviewing facts and data and renewing it as needed. So I think it's key, and if we don't have that in the amendment, to make sure we do. I don't know, from a process standpoint, Kent made a motion, and maybe, I don't think he officially had a second in the modification of that, you know, nuance, which is renewable upon, every 90 days upon council approval. So I, I guess from a process standpoint, I can make that amendment on the third part, but I'll hold off on that till we finish everybody's comments. But let's be careful we have this process effective. Now, on the second part, I, again, Mr. Rudat is concerned that we may be unraveling some important legal language in the, in the resolution, and that, that one I'm the most uncomfortable with. I think I trust Mr. Rudat's judgment to link any type of emergency related to the coronavirus. Would, I trust that judgment, plus it later talks about his judgment is applied, and I trust all of that with Mr. Rudat. And on the first part, for two weeks, I certainly can live with that. We got, we're kind of coming in the front end of this. I asked earlier if there is, what other jurisdictions are doing, and we're, looks like we're one of the leaders in this process, and we got to, what we're carefully balancing is balancing sensitivities of our taxpayers and helping our staff at the same time. And many of our taxpayers are not getting paid right now. Many of our taxpayers, and I know some very large companies that told their employees they're on their own, on their own vacation, sick leave, and/or no pay. So we have to be very sensitive to that. So I would, I would then, I'd actually rather, upon reflection of that and balancing the taxpayer interests, well, let's not go over, over the counter, and we may find that, we're not trying to create extra benefit, but we're trying to help our employees through this the best we can, and balancing it with all those considerations outside, and make sure we're doing a responsible thing for our, both for our employees and our taxpayers. So balance it two weeks, I'm okay with that. The second part, I do want to have a lead from legal before I tear that part up. Mayor, would you like me to jump in now on that?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. So I think the section, in Section 2, the sentence that the amendment proposes to leave reads, "The foregoing list is intended for illustration and not limitation." That sentence is intended to be complementary with the last sentence of Section 3, that does provide the city manager with some additional discretion to, to adopt regulations necessary to, to address actual on-the-ground conditions as he sees them. So as Councilmember Trine commented, and I agree, if the sentence in Section 2 is eliminated, then it does limit the city manager's authority to provide for this leave to only the situations listed there in Section 2, unless he then adopts an additional regulation under Section 3. If, if the sentence remains in Section 2, the city manager would have the authority, because of the illustration, not limitation, language to address some of these on-the-ground situations without the formality of an adopted regulation.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so I have got more questions. Let's see. Councilmember Gamblin, have you talked in this round yet?
No, I have not.
Okay, then you're next.
Okay, so speaking to the amendment, Number 3 in the amendment is, the maker of the amendment seems to be looking at a time limitation. And I'm wondering if we could get some definition from Mr. Rudat on when he's stating emergency. For example, in Section Number 3, there's a statement on city council, if the emergency is extended or other circumstances apply. Do we have a definition of what the emergency is? Is this a county definition on emergency? Is this a state? Is this a federal? How do we know when we're in an emergency situation? How do we know when we're out? And who will define what an emergency is? And maybe I'm incorrect in the assumption that the maker is looking to have some kind of definition on timeline on this. I like the idea of a definition on timeline, but if we had possibly some definition on what's made, meant by the word emergency? And is that a time-limited word? And if it is, how is that delineated and defined?
Yeah, Mayor, I think I can help with that if the council pleases.
Oh, I do. That'd be great.
The first whereas clause identifies the emergency to be that that was declared under the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-05. Then you'll see in parentheses, we say hereafter emergency. So the reference to emergency in Section 4 is a reference to the Governor's declared emergency. It will expire when the Governor says it's expired, when he terminates it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for that definition.
Okay, looking at the lineup here, we're going to go into Round 2. But first, before we do that, we are coming up at 7:30, so we're going to have to extend. I need a motion to extend. Probably four.
30 minutes.
Okay, to be safe, we better give ourselves an hour. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Senator?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Okay, so going into Round 2, let's, Pam, Councilmember Stewart, sorry.
So I'm hoping we can kind of wrap this up. So 80 hours versus 120 hours. We had this conversation two weeks ago. We already agreed to 120 hours. And just to remind people that this bank will only be used after all other benefits have been exhausted. So if we have someone who's, you know, in a really bad situation where they're sick or their family member's been sick, or they've had this run through their entire family and they've had to take leave, right? We're talking about somebody who's in a dire situation and everything else has been exhausted. So I really, and, again, it's at the discretion of the city manager. If we trust the city manager, then we can leave the 120 hours and make sure, and he will, you know, use his prudence. Also, if we trust the city manager, we're going to leave the wording in there that doesn't limit the uses of this, so that if there is something we hadn't thought of, we aren't restricting that use. And in terms of the time limit, we agreed when we declared a state of emergency not to put a time limit on that and have to renew the state of emergency in the city of Sammamish, that we would leave that up to the discretion of the city manager. So I'm really not sure why we need to put a time limit on this. We've all tied all these things to the emergency and said that we will lift them when the emergency clears. So I think that, I think we're good. So I'm hoping we can, we can just get on to the vote on this. Thanks.
Okay, next up I have Councilmember Gamblin.
Okay, I don't want to speak to the amendment. We haven't voted on it yet, but please put me in the queue when we get to discussion on the original motion, please.
Is there any more discussion on this amendment? Okay, looks like none. Voting for the amendment. Is this a package deal?
Yeah, all three.
Okay, so it's a package deal. Do you want to repeat your motion?
Yeah, the motion was to change 120 hours to 80 hours. We want to strike the line in Section 2, the foregoing list is intended for illustrations, not limitation, would be removed, and we would add a 90-hour, or 90-day duration, and then to come back to the city council for review.
Okay, all of the, any, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay. Those opposed?
Nay.
So we have one that I heard nay. Okay, sixth one. Now going back to the original motion, Pam, this was your motion, so would you repeat your motion?
My motion was, you'd have to be voting on the motion as amended, because my motion was to approve this resolution as written.
So your motion as amended.
Which I will obviously be forced to vote for because I want to make sure that we take care of our employees. But again, I think that we have now amended it in ways that were...
Right, including the three. So voting for the original motion with the changes made in the amendment, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Councilman, Madam Mayor, I didn't have a chance to speak to the original motion.
That is my, my, it's my fault. I apologize. Please speak to that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, sorry for that hassle. So my question is to the city manager, I want to make sure, obviously, we want to take care of our, our employees and give them the security that they need to do their jobs effectively. The one question I have is, is there and has there been any exploration on whether this benefit to the employees has been offered in any other county, state, or federal program? In other words, is this double coverage? Or also, could we possibly be foregoing available county, state, or federal programs in lieu of us paying this benefit ourselves? And I'm wondering if there should be something within this that shows that if a county, state, or federal program, or any other program becomes available, that gives this same benefit without it having to be offered or paid for by the city, that those other programs would supersede the city's, city having to pay for these benefits itself? I'm wondering if that could be spoken to by Mr. Rudat.
Mayor, members of council, in answer to your question, I nor my staff have no idea if there is any other program out there. We've been trying to monitor it closely. Now, our admin leave was in fact modeled after a decision back in February by the city of Alameda, California, where they granted three weeks right up front to everybody. And that is what I modeled this after, when I just floated the idea in response to the mayor's inquiry as to, is there an admin leave or other program out there? So it does exist. It's even more open-ended, and it came some weeks before the presidential declaration of his new emergency leave and emergency family leave. Because this is under emergency conditions, I would look to my Kenyon to, to see if that would preclude any opportunity for us to receive benefit from or limitation by something that the feds would come up with. For example, most of their grants are supplement to, and they don't allow supplanting. I personally, I don't have the legal insight, but I don't see this as coming up as a supplanting But the council could always revisit this because it is a resolution based on the COVID emergency. And we, and staff and I would certainly bring back to the council any information that we found out that were additional programs that they might want to, they may want to take into consideration that might impact our administration of this. But right now, I know of no other limitations out there from the feds, and the feds actually supersede the state's family leave program.
Okay, so my point, Mr. Rudat, was should we have some type of clause in here? Because this is an ongoing and dynamic situation, should we have a clause in here that states something like, if there is a federal or a county or a state or any other program that offers a comparable benefit to our employees, that that would be used first before we were obligated and to pay the benefits if they were available elsewhere, and it wouldn't be a double-type situation? I'm just concerned that we're obligating our taxpayers and our residents and to something that if it is available elsewhere, that's where we want to have it paid for. We don't want to be, we want to be leading and taking care of our res, of our employees, but we don't want to do it at the extent of having to pay for something that, if it's available elsewhere. So I'm just wondering, and possibly, this is for Mr. Kenyon, is, is there a clause in here that I don't see? Or can there be a clause that says if something is available or becomes available at any other level, and that would then go ahead and supplant this before we had to pay?
Right, Council, I would direct you to the first sentence of Section 2, which we certainly intended to accomplish your goal there, Councilmember, by saying, requiring that the employee must first exhaust any applicable leaves authorized by the state or federal government prior to using this particular thing.
Okay, so that would indicate any past or present or current programs that came available would have to be used up first before this was, was implemented?
Right, and that's why we put the word applicable in there. I mean, so right now, we know what the state and federal governments are providing, so those apply. If a new program also becomes available, say, next week, then that would also then become applicable.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you, Mr. Kenyon, for that input.
You bet.
Excellent, thank you, Mike. I have Councilmember Stewart, do you have a comment?
No, Mr. Kenyon answered it. I was going to let Councilmember Gamblin know, but it's actually covered, I think, in two places because it discusses in the whereas clause about the extended paid health emergency leave as well as in Section 2. So I think, I think we're covered. We also, this bank can also be used for things that would not necessarily be covered by that, like a reduced work week in terms of hours if people are able to work from home but don't have a full 40 hours' worth of work to do. So I think that it does fill the gaps.
Okay. I think we're moving on. Excellent. Okay, so the next thing up is the council reports. So...
Mayor, we pulled on the underlying motion. We pulled it back to listen to...
Pulled it back, so we have to... Okay, let's go back to that motion.
Motion as amended.
Motion as amended.
Aye.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Got it. Moving forward. The next on our list is we've got council reports. Okay, I'm going to go through the, the list and, and just yell out if you've got a report. Deputy Mayor?
Nope, I don't have anything.
Councilmember Ross?
None for me, thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
No report, thank you.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. I had been contacted by a few people over the last couple of weeks about different things, different groups that were starting. One of these, though, that came to me is one of our girls from one of our high schools that is now going to Berkeley, but of course she's back because the college isn't, is done for the year. But what she has started is a volunteer group, and she's already got a number of, like 50 to 70 volunteers. She was interviewed by Como today, and she's working with Eastside Friends of Seniors. She's been in contact and working with the Eastside Fire, and she's working to connect people up there. She's got this group of college kids that are, are shoppers, and, and they're connecting up with people that, whether they're elderly, or they're sick, or they've got autoimmune diseases, or for whatever reason, you know, have got asthma, for whatever reason, cannot leave their home or are not comfortable leaving their home. And they're, they're doing errands for them, they're doing their shopping for them, they're doing that sort of stuff. And so she's, I'm going to be talking to her again tomorrow. She's trying to get that, that out and going, say, you know, all these kids that are back from college, and they're all just, you know, full lots of energy and all excited to get this thing going. So it's really kind of interesting and very fun to see them all wanting to give back to the community. So it's very fun. So once I have all that information, I'm going to get that out to the council members. We'll get it on the website and everything. They actually wanted to, there are another one who wanted to get a banner onto the roadway. And so anything that we can do to try to, to access, the problem with the banner is the people that, that we think that we, that we're trying to reach would be, you know, in particular, the elderly, well, they're probably not driving. And so if you think about the people that, you know, that we're trying to reach, that we want to get to some of these services out, they're probably not the ones that are going to be driving. So anyway, so it's, it's one of those things that maybe the council, we need to put some thought into, you know, maybe it's a postcard that needs to go to each household, a mailing or something, that has some of these, some information on where people, you know, phone numbers of where they need to go... people, you know, phone numbers of where they need to go, or just an emergency information card of, you know, where they can call for services and some of this other stuff to, because not everybody's on the internet, and especially our senior citizens. And so I just wanted to put that out there for people to think about a little bit. Okay. Next, Councilmember Stewart, did you have anything?
I actually do. I have a number of items. So I wasn't aware that we were, that there were reports being produced, so I've actually been in contact with our Human Services Commission. I spoke with the Chair, Stan Gunno, and I also spoke with Tom Owlers about kind of what is going on on the ground. I've also spoken to a couple of nonprofits in the area. And I, I would like to understand kind of what's going on, but I think that as a council, we need to be considering some actions to take. We, in, in speaking with Mr. Gunno, and actually, I heard a report, or read a report today, one of the big issues that is at risk of increasing during a crisis like this where it's high stress and people are trapped at home is gonna be domestic violence. And I think there are a number of actions that we can take to address that as a, as a city, and I think we should circle back with Rita and, and work on that. I think that, to me, is very concerning that there could be, you know, abusive situations, and people really are, are not out and interacting to be able to get help. There are also a number of jurisdictions that have taken some action for their residents to provide funding to not-for-profits that are intended to help people in their community. And so as Councilmember Ross already raised the issue that there are a number of people who have lost their, their jobs, and there are people who may be in danger of not being able to pay their rent, or their mortgage, or pay utilities, or afford food. So I do think we should be looking at that and determining how we can make sure that for those who are in need in our community are able to access that. I've also spoken with some businesses, and one of the things, the primary commercial real estate provider in Sammamish is not providing any leeway to, and the businesses in terms of rent. They're not allowing any late payments. They're actually even giving some of the businesses hard times who've been trying to put out signs, letting people know that they're open and they're doing takeout or things like that. So I'm, I'm curious if the council would be interested in passing some ordinances as other jurisdictions have that require landlords, since they are able to get federal help and assistance, to at least provide some sort of flexibility in terms of late payments and not imposing late fees or interest on those late payments, to ensure that the small businesses who are struggling, or who are even closed at this time, have a chance to, to get their footing again and, and catch back up. So I would like to see what we can do along those lines. I also wanted to let you know that I attended the Metro, the King County Metro Town Hall meeting today, and King County Metro is working very hard to continue to provide necessary transportation services to critical areas for people, particularly those who need to get to their, you know, jobs, to get to hospitals, to get to shopping centers, for people who don't have transportation otherwise. So that's out there. They're doing a lot of work to improve social distancing, to keep the coaches clean, to protect their workers, and they are providing the access. So for anyone who has any sort of physical challenges, they are waiving the initial need to register for the access transportation services, so people can just call and, and get that, and then they'll, in parallel, get them registered for that service. But that way, people with physical challenges, who may also be more vulnerable, don't have to ride the fixed routes, but they can take those buses, those access. The access transportation is actually limiting the, the buses to only one rider at a time right now, and so they're deploying additional buses where needed, so that people can get to where they need to go. Many of those folks need to seek medical attention regularly, or, or need that assistance to get to the grocery store. So there's a lot of great information. I can provide more information in a written report, and, and hopefully, we have all of this information out on our website as well. But they've really done an impressive job, and it was a great meeting where they were trying to answer all the questions for all of the localities, and, and make sure people were aware of all the work that they were doing to try to keep their employees safe, as well as providing critical transportation services during this crisis.
Excellent. Thank you. Maybe you and I can connect up, because I met with some business folks yesterday and worked with them with some ideas on working with the one single landlord that they seem to be all having a, a major problem with.
Yeah. We can, if we want, we can chat tomorrow, and let's, let's work on something.
That'd be great. Okay. And then next up, we have got city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I've got a, a few minor items, but what I put on the report tonight that I wanted to speak to first was to be very forthright and transparent with the council regarding the contract for additional legal services, with a focus, I'll just say right up front, is to try to be budget-neutral. But let me read the report that I provided to the council. Mayor and council members, I am pleased to inform you that the city has retained the legal services of renowned GMA and land use attorney, Peter Eglick, from the law firm of Eglick &amp; Whited, who is based out of Seattle. Mr. Eglick will serve as outside counsel to advise me and the staff on GMA, land use, and comprehensive planning matters. I felt that I needed alternative but specialized legal counsel, so that I could provide the city council and the staff the best guidance possible on the many complex planning and land use matters facing our city. In my professional opinion, at this juncture in time, and given the importance and value of top-level answers on land use, semicolon, and the need for experienced guidance on legal matters involved with the decisions we make, semicolon, and the decisions we must make that will shape the future of this community, semicolon, it is prudent to have access to the best talents available. I have attached the resume of Mr. Eglick and the exec, excuse me, executed contract with Eglick &amp; Whited here for your information. The engagement letter, which is attached to the contract, does not include representation on outside cases to which the city is a party to, specifically the Jaren case. Under previous council direction or actions, the Jaren case is being handled by the Madrona Law Group with Kim Pratt as lead counsel. We have had many land use challenge, we have many land use challenges ahead of us, and your staff needs impeccable guidance, so we can provide you with well-vetted alternatives, so that you can make well-informed decisions. The city will strive to stay budget-neutral with Mr. Eglick's land use advice. The contract was drafted to conform with Sammamish Municipal Code, Section 2.50.010, Prens 1, Prens B, contract approval authorization, and therefore will not exceed $49,999. Mr. Eglick will report to the interim city manager, and staff will work through the city manager's office for access to and the use of his legal counsel. Thank you for your support. I've attached his attachments of his resume, the contract, and the engagement letter. His resume is extensive, but I, what I wanted to note is that this is part of my effort to control costs and to improve my learning curve on issues that come up. So I've talked to Cheryl briefly, interim Public Works Director, and David Pyle Development, or Director of Community Development, and asked them if they have issues to come to me. Let's discuss them. That helps me have better insight in what we're doing, and then we'll talk about access to the best attorney in our cadres, because there is much historical value in the attorneys that we currently have under contract, and that may be of value going ahead, or the additional information experiences of Mr. Eglick could prove value to the staff as well. So I wanted to formally report this to the council, and I, as I did in a memo, but wanted to put it on the record so that there was recordation of it, and there was no question about what the intent was and that the council was reported back to. I understand that hasn't always been the case, but I'd rather over-communicate than under-communicate.
Okay. Do you believe we have a question? Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, while technically, it's budget-neutral because you're not asking for additional funding, I think that there was quite a bit of concern raised with the last resolution around being sensitive to spending any taxpayer money while we have people out of work. So I'm just curious if this is, is the appropriate time to be spending almost $450 an hour, because I think it's $400 an hour plus a 12% fee on top of that annually for this kind of time. But before we get to that, I guess my question is, what land use challenges are you referring to that we'll need the special counsel for? And then my final question would be, will you be providing the full council a report on the questions and answers that you get from this legal counsel, so that we can all be equally aware of what's being discussed, especially given the significant cost that this will be?
Okay. To the first question on cost, I'm an extremely budgetary-conscious city manager, and when I look for all of the contracts that we have, and we derive benefit from those, in particular, let's just say, community development, has often referred to a contract that used to come under Mike's office with Kim Pratt, and now there's a separate contract that was just signed and executed in December for $49,999. I don't look to that as being a duplication, but a choice. And with the number of issues that have been coming up regarding concurrency, regarding the town center, issues coming forth with the town center on potential development regulations, that which is in the, or outside of the docketed plans moving forward and identified, and looking towards the future on the comprehensive plan, those kinds of questions, I thought that I needed to look around and compare. So I sought out attorneys that were vastly experienced in the areas of the Growth Management Act, as well as had been before, other boards, commissions, courts, had a track record with many different communities. I spoke directly to three candidates. I think I referred to them in my letter, and off the top of my head, one was with, I think, Van S. Feldman, very large firm, very experienced. I spoke with Jeff Dur, was it Jeff Dur, oh, Jay Dur. And he had an extensive amount of experience. His firm did too, but there was the perception of a lot of conflict there, because being a very large firm, they do a lot of private practice. And as we discussed more, and where the, I perceive the council to currently sit on a man, a number of issues, that there were some potential perceptions of conflict. He assured me that the, that his firm could stay very independent and had strong divisions between its different cadre of attorneys. But he even himself said, well, there might be some conflicts. And he himself, without solicitation, said, if I was going to recommend somebody to you, I would recommend Mr. Peter Eglick. I thought that was very interesting. I'd already spoken and interviewed Mr. Eglick, so I thought that was a confirmation. Another one was Claudia Newman, very, very depth attorney, experienced, been involved with GMA issues almost from its inception, and I thought she was exceptional. I thought in my interview of the three people that Peter Eglick was somebody that, or Eglick was somebody that I thought had just a little bit more edge, and I reached out to a few other folks, and one was the city attorney formerly from Bothell and currently at, I have trouble with some of these names, Payup?
Two hours.
What she said. And that was, I think, Joe Beck, and he's been a city attorney in both places, and he told me that the choice of Mr. Eglick was really money well-spent, whether, whereas at that dollar amount of $400 an hour, he was on the higher end of what municipalities normally pay. He was worth every dollar, a lot of bang for the buck, and a lot of bang for your buck. And there was a city manager, so...
Yeah. I understand, and I appreciate the thoroughness of your, your interviews. I guess I'm just looking at the current situation, and, you know, what we're facing as a, as a community, and as, you know, in general, is very different, and I feel like we have some urgent needs. We have people who may not be able to afford food, or who may be getting evicted. And I feel like those are the issues that we need to be making sure that we are prioritizing in terms of any dollars that we spend at this moment in time, right, in terms of the, the safety and welfare of our community. So that's really more where, where I'm getting at. And I guess that, that's just my primary concern, is that it just doesn't seem like this is the right time to be going out and, and spending extra money, even though you're not asking for additional funds, and it's within your, your spending cap. If, if we have an extra $50,000, is this the best place to be spending it right at the moment? And maybe we should be seeing how long this crisis lasts, and how bad the economic situation is for the community on the other side of it.
Okay. I, I embrace your concerns. I have no concerns about that, and I feel that those are important priorities for the city. But the, the long-term impact of decisions we make regarding land use, and my efforts to get up to speed, I felt I needed another option, so that I could provide you and the rest of the council with additional top-level legal advice on decisions that the council may make that could otherwise cost us hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, in penalties, or lost fees, or lost opportunity. And because of one of the issues is the city's lack of a TMP, has in fact cost the city untold thousands of dollars, because not having a TMP in place has defeated the ability of the city to assess impact fees to the degree that would have been more beneficial to the city. And that's something that I think we might be able to make up for to some degree, but we wouldn't want to err in doing that. Again, and the TMP has been the default area where we look to for impact fees. So that's something that I just noticed right away, and trying to be budget-neutral. So that's something that I just noticed right away, and trying to be budget-neutral...
You won't find me arguing against the TMP, but I don't understand why we need legal counsel for that. That was council direction to postpone working on the TMP. And I guess one other question would be, and I'm sorry to ask this in front of you, Mike, but is Mike Kenyon unable to provide these services at this moment in time? And could we delay in spending this money until we understand the financial impacts of the crisis at hand? I mean, I know that you're currently working with the finance team to understand just how deep this crisis is going to hit us from a revenue perspective, and we don't have that information yet.
Oh, I agree. It's very difficult to see into the future what the economic impact is going to be. As I've stated in my reports, that the city of Sammamish is far better off than most communities because of our stable tax base. But we don't have a clear crystal ball into the future. And by the same token, adding another top-level legal mind along with Mike and all of his experience and with Kim and hers that she had from being with Mike before and where she's at now, just adds to an array of persons we can look to without any additional cost. I'm not prepared to defer the option of pursuing this avenue when I can keep it budget-neutral and still have the benefit of a good cadre of attorneys.
Okay, so we've got two other people that also have questions behind Pam. We've got councilmember Gamblin and, oh, and Jason, and councilmember Trean.
I believe that Jason was first, and then I'm second.
Okay, so then councilmember Richie.
Appreciate that, Ken. I'll be quick. So I respect the need to try to get additional legal representation in. I guess my concern is budget-neutral means working within existing budgets. I appreciate that. My overarching concern is why not go for free advice when you can get it, rather than having to get an additional costly lawyer in place when we have several lawyers already working with us on these issues? I have in the past worked with Futurewise. If you need to contact there, I'm happy to provide it, but they provide a lot of information free. There's no cost to cities or anybody to reach out to them. They have consultants and directors and researchers that can provide a ton of information on whether or not the options we're going to be pursuing in the future, whether or not to get into legal entanglements or not, are, you know, something other cities have done. They can kind of, you know, let's not reinvent the wheel. What have other cities done? Futurewise has a ton of information on that. I just recommend that before we, you know, go down the idea of trying to get a lawyer or prepare for something that may or may not need a lawyer, for that matter. Additionally, the Department of Commerce, the growth management folks at the Department of Commerce have answered a ton of questions from me over the course of the past few years when I've reached out to them, again, free. They are the ones that are, you know, the RCW. They are the folks that are basically building regulations that the legislature puts in and help try to, at least for me, answered questions when I had questions about concurrency or land use or stormwater or, you know, economic development, all those things. Within the GMA, the points in the GMA. So I just, like I said, I would recommend reaching out to, you know, agencies and organizations that are A) free, B) are, you know, have a ton more information, and C) are not necessarily geared towards what's going to get us into a legal entanglement or not, more of a historical basis. And I, I mean, while I appreciate, Dave, that you're, you know, there's some inferences in terms of what the council may or may not do, I think we need to, my hope is that we should not go down the path of, I mean, it's your decision. We've afforded you this opportunity, so the toothpaste is out of the tube. But I guess more my feeling is, we should try to bring these people in, more maybe in a study session here after the, you know, the world changes back to normal or whatever that is. But we can have people come in and maybe have a question and answer session. What if we do this? What happens if we do that? How does that change the reality? Well, this city did this, or this municipality did that, or... That may be, in my opinion, more helpful to us as we try to build policy. And yeah, at that point, maybe we do want to hire attorneys to review what we're thinking to see if that's going to get us into a legal entanglement. I just, I love the idea of trying to build policy as to what is least legally dangerous for the city in terms of its financial future. What's good policy is a different conversation. So maybe we can do them all together. Maybe we hire an attorney, but I would just hope that we can, I'm just going to put the suggestion out there. Like I said, reach out to other organizations and agencies that can help us build good policy. Thank you.
Mayor, can I address it? Thank you, Councilman Richie. I will pick that information up from the minutes. I appreciate that. I think that we can benefit from all of that, and this does not preclude me from seeking those avenues, and I'm incentivized by it. I like the issue of less cost and more information. And my goal here is to try to provide the council with as much information as possible so your decisions are as informed decisions as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Richie. I didn't mean to go past you, by the way. Okay, next is councilmember Gamblin.
Yes, I'd like to thank the city manager for taking this step. I don't think anyone can dispute that we have had in the past, we have, and we have now, and have will going forwards, extensive questions as a city on GMA specifications and concurrency and land use that are exceptionally complex, these questions, and cannot be postponed due to a current situation, as the penalties and potential risks of postponing these things are much, much greater. There are thousands, as Mr. Rudat says, hundreds of thousands, millions, possibly tens of millions of dollars. I've never had any luck with replacing the very specific input and counsel from attorneys. I've never had any luck replacing that with free information from public agencies. I feel we are in this position where this is critical information. We need very specific, critical input from the best legal minds that we can to make sure that we move the city in the direction that is best for the residents that live here. So I've looked over this resume. I've very rarely seen anything as extensive and as applicable to the city as the resume of the attorney that Mr. Rudat has hired. So I applaud the idea. I realize we are in an emergency situation, but unfortunately, that doesn't stop things from moving along. We need to have this information and input now, so I fully support Mr. Rudat's hire. Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Trean, you've passed. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, we're going to let the, you've got more on your report?
Yeah, just a few.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I wanted to, I'm going to make every effort to give you at least that bi-weekly report, and sometimes it will be weekly. But a couple other things that had come up just yesterday was the, as you all know, Victor Solomon is working on the traffic audit. And when I was reviewing, along with our acting public works director and Mike Sugg, the responses to Mr. Solomon's questions and his audits as it was being compiled to be reported on, and that's what tonight's meeting was going to be about, one of the answers that he came up a couple, more than a couple times in there was that David Evans and Associates would not give him access to a spreadsheet formula that we'll just refer to as the Black Box. And that bothered me because, and I'm not pretending at all to understand traffic engineering here, but when you're doing an audit, whether it's the public sector, the private sector, you know, you can have nondisclosure agreements and all sorts of things from an audit of software, proprietary chemical information. And this was denying us access to what I came to understand was, at one time, open source or provided back in the early 2000s. And in fact, Mr. Solomon had access. He had worked on this Black Box. And so I went and decided that, I didn't like the answers, so I went and looked up the contracts with DE or David Evans and Associates. And I saw, I think, the first one goes back to like 2003, and then I found another one for 2013. And the one of 2013 actually lays out very clearly, more clearly than the one that the council just adopted in 2019, but it has a couple provisions in there about the work product is the city's. And specifically, there is one that says, "All material is available if a formal audit is done," or something words to that effect. And the way I read that, mine just went to, you need to provide this or you're in breach of contract. But that was just my interpretation. So I got those documents together, and I sent them over to Mike Kenyon, and I asked him to take a look at it and to opine on this concern that we had because I felt Victor's audit would not be complete without having access to whatever formulas might be in the spreadsheet. Because David Evans and Associates actually made the spreadsheet available to him for him to look, but he could not look into the columns of what made up the formulas and what the assumptions were. And what I do know about this stuff is that there are a lot of assumptions made from a lot of different engineers that are either codified or in books and assumptions made that clearly I felt that the council would benefit from if we had a closer and more thorough look. So Mike opined to me that if they needed to provide it, it was clear, otherwise they were in breach. And Mike, if I have misspoke at all, please correct me here. But with that, guided with that information, then I went back and I tried to mitigate this potential problem at the lowest possible level. So rather than me sending a letter, me making a call, or having it come from Mike Kenyon's office, I asked the acting public works director, Cheryl Patson, to re-contact David Evans and Associates and request that that information be provided. Mike Sugg and Cheryl had both reported to me that in the past, we asked for that information, and it had been denied. Mr. Solomon asked for that information, and it had been denied, and it is part of his audit findings that it had been denied. Cheryl made the request, made it in writing, and poof, they have provided it. So now, we asked Mr. Solomon how much more time and/or dollars it would take to process this information so that his audit would be more complete. He estimated, I don't have the number right here in front of me, but approximately $5,000 and some change. I authorized that change order, and he'll hopefully have it within the next two weeks. So that was an important finding that I wanted to make the council aware of so that you have more information upon which to render opinions on once we finally get to the portion or to the point in time where Victor can make a report back to the council on his findings and the outcome of that audit. I think most everything else I've included in my other report. If I've missed something, I'll certainly send something out to the council. But thank you, Mayor and council, for me being allowed to make this report tonight. I have nothing further.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work you did to get us the information that we wanted. That's excellent. And Kristi, are you, was it something she's cutting in and out, she said?
It's fine now. For a second, he was, no, but it's fine now.
Okay. Yeah, you know, we've got 10 minutes left, and we're going into executive session, so we should probably just extend the meeting. I'm not hearing any motions to do so.
I make a motion that we extend the meeting till 9:30. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. I'm opposed.
Go to executive session.
9:30 is outrageous.
I know. Let's go. Let's get this done.
Okay, so we are headed into executive session, which means we have to cut out of this meeting and go click into the second one, correct?
Correct, yes. Log out of this meeting link and click the executive session.
Everybody log out of this meeting link, and we will catch you in the next.
Mayor, you have to announce the purpose of the executive session and the amount of time you'll be in as well.
Okay, so we've been extended till 9:30. Executive session, here's, yes, for potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.11.0.1.i. And we are taking a three-minute health and safety break.
And you'll be in the executive session for how long?
We'll be in executive session for, well, starting from 8:25 till...
Not more than 9:30, right?
Not more than 9:30.
30 minutes. 30 minutes. Don't want more than 30 minutes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Stay safe, everybody.
Good night.